Good evening and welcome to the May 6, 2020 school committee meeting. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. GL 30A, Section 20, "The public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on Channel 12, and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting." Since we are meeting remotely, we will not be doing the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. We do have a plan to go directly into executive session and come back out to public session afterwards. So, do I have a motion?
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with all staff, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, the motion is the school committee will move to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, 3821A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with all staff, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session. This motion does require a roll call, but before that, I just want to find out if there is any further discussion. Seeing none, I will call for a roll call vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ronwyn?
Yes.
Armin? Yes. We are now in executive session. We will be coming back in public session once we are complete. Thank you.
Welcome back to the Wednesday, May sixth, twenty twenty, meeting of the Long Meadows School Committee. Regarding the Governor's big order presenting certain provisions of meeting law. The public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on channel twelve and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. I will now call for a moment of silence.
An email from Mr. Kurt Friedman dated April twenty 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 regarding planning for the health and safety of voters and poll workers during the upcoming elections. And an email from Mr. Kurt Friedman dated April twenty 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 urging the Long Meadow Board of Health to implement a face mask policy.
Thank you. And in regards to that face mask policy, we not only have one in Long Meadow, now we have one across the state. So. Approval of minutes, we have minutes for approval?
I have a motion. Committee approve the minutes for the April twenty second, twenty twenty, school committee meeting as presented.
Motion second. Motion and second, any further discussion?
See you done. I'm sorry, I just wanted to note that I think the name of the the Western Mass. Three D printing should be collaborative, not coalition. Is that right, Gianna? Okay, that's all I noticed.
As amended. Okay. Any further discussion? Good catch. Seeing none, call for a vote, Gianna.
You're muted.
Gianna, sorry.
Sorry, guys. Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Suzie.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Bronwyn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Armin, yes. Okay. Moving on to. Any visitor comments, which we cannot do at this time, school committee announcements and recognitions?
I love the class of twenty twenty sign on the lawn. Thank you, DPW.
It's awesome. Any other comments or recognitions? The only thing I would want to say is that I was. Privileged to be a part of Marty's town hall with the our LPS family last week. It was an awesome. Huge number of people out there watching StreamYard and Marty did a great job letting everybody know where we are. There was a lot of kudos to Marty, a lot of kudos to Kathy Rizzato, who has just joined us. Just for all the cooperation that's happening, the communication has been outstanding from from the perspective of the feedback or getting at that meeting that people are appreciating. The feedback and just, you know, and I know it was teacher appreciation. Just all the things that all of the townspeople did for teachers with the holding science and creating videos and whatever else to make our our teachers and the LPS community feel, you know, special. It was just nicely done. So kudos to everybody.
Just had one.
Suzie.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I have to tip my hat off to Mrs. Joy at Blueberry Hill, who hosted a school-wide assembly on Monday for Blueberry Hill School kids. May the fourth be with you. She did a a drums alive session. It was very loud in my backyard, but it was it was great to have all the kids on a Zoom call doing that with her. And I I give her a lot of credit for putting that pulling that off.
Okay. Any others? Hey, Bronwyn.
I just wanted to say happy teacher appreciation week to all the teachers. I know we are all super appreciative of all the stuff that they do. Especially right now during this time, the students and parents and school committee really appreciates everything that they're doing. Thanks.
Definitely speak for all of us. Hold on a second, see a chat. Oh, yes. And again, today is National School Nurse Day. Appreciative of all of the things that our our school nurses do. So. Thank you for everybody and and again, why this is a LPS is a great, great community. We have no business with gas. Marty, Superintendent Report.
I will, I'll reserve my comments until we get to some of the business items below.
Okay.
That's okay.
That's fine. Sorry, I'm just my throat is so dried and we keep talking. We do have a schedule of school committee meetings though through the end of the year, just so we're confirming with everybody Tuesday, May nineteenth. Welcome, Armin.
Hello.
Tuesday, June second. And then on Thursday, June eighteenth, there will be a warrior organization of the school committee after the election, which is on the sixteenth. And if there is anybody under the age of sixty who would like to be considered for. Being a poll worker or working the election, feel free to contact the the town clerk, I was told. As well as for town meeting, which is also going to be in June. Basically, they are trying to shorten town meeting. Becky Townsend has reached out to me. Basically, you're going to try and keep comments as succinct as possible, like that word tonight. And then only non-voters allowed to speak will be department heads and or staff that have to address particular situations. And then the the meeting after that would be on Tuesday, June thirtieth. I don't have a school committee chair report. Armin, do you have anything from a rep report?
The only thing I kind of want to say is that I'm I'm happy to see that more and more teachers are moving toward online learning. It was, I would say, a little, the numbers were a bit low in the beginning, but definitely. In the past month or so, more and more teachers have been adopting the online learning format, and it's definitely been going well. So that's all I want to say.
Nice. Okay. Go to finance subcommittee report? A wait a second before we do that. Other reports, Bronwyn, LPVC, or do we want to save that for budget?
I think I think I think so. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I think it'll it'll likely come up with the agenda item below.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we'll move on to finance sub.
I'm wondering if we should move the budget discussion up since both of those things might have an impact on the or fit in under the budget conversation. So I don't know if you want to talk on the higher big picture budget. Issues first, and then maybe the items that came up under finance sub.
No, that makes good sense. If I have the consensus of the the board, I will make that change the agenda.
Yes.
All right. So we're gonna go into budget. I guess I'll start just going into budget just from from the school committee perspective. You know, with the select board met on Monday night. The select board is looking at some revenue shortfalls across the board. Some of them, which I think are worst case scenarios, but we are in a very difficult time right now and have to. Have to be aware of the potential revenue shortfalls that could come in. Some of the things they talk about were excise tax not being too. To where it would be, you know, potential shortfalls in in state aid, which. You know, thankfully, potential shortfalls in state aid would not affect Long Meadow as much as it may affect some some other towns. But nonetheless, it would still, you know, be a heavy burden. We're talking, you know, shortfalls from potentially, they were talking about, you know, whether MGM would fulfill its promises under the. You know, multi-year agreement that they have with us. And so, looking at all of that, the the select board was projecting, I believe, was like an eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar revenue shortfall for the twenty twenty-one budget year of which. Both they, us and the town have voted a budget. In when we're still looking to revise before going into town meeting in June, the number that they are. Asking the school committee to take a look at is the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Reducing our. School committee approved budget of twenty twenty-one by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So just a little background budget-wise. Tom, you want to add anything or Marty?
No, I think I think you summed it up well. I think the the conversation we're having here is 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 being held in just about every community. I think everybody's revising their their revenue projections. The the local aid numbers are the biggest factor, I think, in the revised revenue projections that the town treasurer discussed with the select board. And then so that that obviously will require us to revisit and we'll look tonight maybe for some. General direction from the the committee on on how to respond to that. These revised projections that the select board discussed on Monday night.
Yeah, and I I think the other thing, and again, these aren't tied together, but they still reflect the the times we're in, is that the the. Town has also furloughed a number of employees, including crossing guards and other positions within town. And I think that the question before us has to be whether there is some action the school committee would would take as well. In acknowledging that the the town. Has taken those steps and that that we are. Fully aware that that that, you know, the the current financial situation is not the best one. So, Tom or Marty to add to that or open up the comments?
Well, I think I would just add a little more, I think, unfortunately, a little more the weeds in terms of how how the number was arrived at. There are a number of revenue lines that the town has revised down based on everything that's going on. Specifically. General aid from the state to the town. Motor vehicle excise, meals tax. So they they revised what figure they used in the FY twenty-one budget. Based on the best information that's available at this time. And, you know, I think it's subject to change. I think, as I say to you guys regularly when doing reports, that it's based on the information that we have available at this time. So there is about six hundred thousand in revenue alone that Paul Desterzic presented to the select board. That we, you know, that he anticipates will come in below what the twenty-one budget has included, which is kind of what has brought on. The change that we're discussing tonight. So I just wanted to kind of give a little context to how. Or how we've gotten to this point and where the number came from.
Okay, thanks for that that. Clarification. Is there any discussion? Kevin.
Well, I think I just want to make sure we're clear what we're discussing right or right now, are we discussing the current fiscal year budget or the next fiscal year budget?
I would say that we're talking about the impact of the pandemic on both FY twenty and the FY twenty-one budget as the the agenda item. I think the actions, there are separate actions for the FY twenty and the FY twenty-one budget. So from a keeping things organized, maybe we start on the FY twenty to talk about any potential. Actions that we have to take immediately. And then we can move on to the impact of the FY twenty-one budget.
So I I'd be happy to continue with that guidance if you're okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I I think the the discussion that I'd like to have is is the discussion about, you know, are we able to furlough people? Who don't have work currently and that wouldn't impact our ability to get some of the federal money that might come our way. With some of the legislation that's ongoing. And so I think one of the things I was hoping we could talk about is, is it possible to furlough the lunch monitors because clearly there's not work going on for them? And I think that's consistent with how the town has looked at their furloughs as well. And so I think it's important for the schools to to, you know, try to match what the town is doing. Also being aware of what the long-term consequences could be. And so I wonder if Marty might be able to to speak to that a little bit.
Sure, yeah. So the town has, as Kevin described, taken steps towards furloughing employees that are not in collective bargaining units. And who work on generally a part-time basis. Among them, crossing guards and sort of the one could make the case that the comparable position here in Long Meadow Public Schools would be. Our lunch monitors who are obviously valued employees and who provide a critical service during during the school day. Right now, obviously, we're not serving lunch. They're not they're not involved in the distribution plans that we have in place. So that that certainly is kind of worthy of your discussion tonight. I think the. My I have confidence that the town's Human Resources Office would manage this very carefully. And in a in a way that. Communicates to them that this is a furlough, which is, in a sense, a confirmation that. When we are back to normal operations, that their positions would be restored. So and and I do think that. You know, we want to be mindful of the 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 human impact here and and that we're. We're talking about employees that are important to us, important to the daily operations of schools. But I would want them to know, I'd want the community to know that we remain committed to the lunch monitors if that was. A direction that the committee wanted to go.
Sir, any? Other discussion on on that?
So Tom could, you know, maybe it might be helpful to provide some details on the the number of lunch monitors and. How it might provide some relief in the FY twenty budget.
Yeah, we we have about eighteen employees, eighteen individuals that fill this role at elementary primarily. There are a couple at the middle school level. This, the the payroll amount for a. A two-week period is approximately thirty-five hundred dollars for the collective group. You know, the remaining weeks we have left in the. What would be considered the school year would would probably equate to around ten or twelve thousand dollars through June nineteenth. That would not be incurred in terms of those salaries if we were to furlough them.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Or a motion?
So I, I'm happy to do the motion if you want, Armin.
Sure. I mean, I'd do it, but Chair can't.
Right. I move that we furlough the lunch monitors for the remainder of this academic year.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
This is never easy to do. It's, it's awful, but we have their, you know, valued folks, as Marty said, but it's, at this point, it's the right thing to do.
Uh, yeah, I back your sentiments wholeheartedly and, you know, just know that this is not anything that is taken lightly. And, you know, it, it is with, with deep regret that we have to do this and hopefully that the everything will rebound and we're back where we should be in the fall and, and, you know, and it's behind us, but. Any further, Marty?
Yeah, I just think to remind folks who might be watching that this is really a, a break in employment and it's, it's not a, it's not a layoff. That the town HR office will continue to support them through this process and that we're, we are committed to them as Long Meadow Public School employees. It, it, I think we are, it does put us in a better position for next year. And I think it's the, it's the responsible thing to do right now. Our, we will ask the principals to reach out to these folks individually to provide them the assurances that they can and try to explain as best we can the, the reasoning for this.
Thanks, Marty. No further discussion. I will call for a vote. Ryan?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
I'm on mute.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Armin, yes. Okay, we'll move the discussion to the FY21 budget. So for FY21 budget, you know, Tom has given the, some background. And so the expectation is that the school committee should be taking three, approximately 350 grand out of our FY21, 21 approved budget. So, I guess from a, a standpoint of taking a look at the budget, yes, the school committee is very mindful of its fiscal responsibility to the town, but also of our responsibility to the children and the teachers and the entire community to do whatever we can to maintain those high standards that, that, that come to, to mean LPS. And so none of those actions that we would, would take would be, be taken lightly. So I don't have any, we don't have anything to discuss directly tonight. But what I would like to suggest is that we have Dr. O'Shea with the administrative team. You know, take this away to identify areas of the budget that, that we would look to focus on, to take that to finance subcommittee in order to vet potential savings and then from there bring it back to the entire committee to, to approve prior to going into town meeting floor. So that's kind of like what I see, but I'll open it up for any discussion, Marty, Tom, or any member. Marty? Marty, you're on mute.
I appreciate that the committee is, is sort of signaling that it understands the fiscal position of the town right now. And as if, if, you know, assuming the committee concurs with Armin, we'll, we'll certainly go back and identify how we can respond to this. I'd say, you know, our general approach, again, for anyone watching at home, would be to prioritize health and safety. We know that that's going to be a consideration when we return to some degree of normalcy. I know that this committee and this community in general is really committed to maintaining the class size patterns that, that have made this district successful. So I, I would want to assure folks that that would remain a priority for us. And generally, the thought is that you want to keep any potential reductions as far away from teaching and learning as possible. And, you know, we're, we're fortunate, frankly, I mean, the, the number that that the Select Board has identified as a potential for the, for the schools, 350,000 is, is a, a much smaller number than many communities are dealing with right now. And so I, I'm confident that we can be responsive to the new revenue projections in a way that protects all of our priorities and, and, and doesn't reach down into teaching and learning in ways that would be hurtful to this district. So, you know, we, we have to dive deeper and bring back some recommendations to finance sub if that's the direction that the committee wants us to go.
Is there any further discussion or is that direction agreeable by the committee?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yes.
Looks like we've got consensus on that. So, okay. So then I guess we'll go back to finance sub, finance sub, Tom? Or Brian or whoever?
It's Jamie.
Jamie?
Or Tom.
Or Tom?
Take it away, Tom.
Okay. We did, uh, we did meet yesterday and we had a conversation in regards to the collaborative fourth quarter invoices based on feedback from the school committee at our last meeting two weeks ago. And so I think based on our conversation and getting some clarity in regards to what the finance committee would like to see, finance sub committee would like to see in terms of providing a recommendation for the school committee would be to receive a specific credit associated to the savings that we, the collaborative anticipates occurring based on services not occurring. So I think the approach that I would like to take would be to table any action tonight with the hopes that within the next two weeks, we can have the collaborative provide us hopefully some information in regards to the offset that would be available to use against the fourth quarter invoices that we would be able to present to hopefully finance sub first and then to the school committee for consideration in terms of both the invoices and the credit that would be made available to Long Meadows.
Jamie, anything to add?
Nope. I, I think, I think the only thing, you know, on that, that Tom, Tom hit kind of nail on the head. I just definitely would really like to see that credit in advance. You know, from, from my vantage point, you know, obviously it's committees, you know, you know, can act in whatever way we as a group see fit. But I just very, find it hard to believe that we can't get to a number prior to paying a bill and making sure we're retaining these funds on behalf of the town is the way I'm looking at it. You know, because soon as we pay those out, we're, we're just going to be at their beck and call as to what they give back and when they give back. This does not coincide with many of the other, I think, any of the other districts that are within the collaborative. So this is definitely a differing point. But I, I still think it's the right way to look at this, given what we just discussed. And, you know, what, what this pertains to as well as a, as a service that we're paying for, that we currently are not getting any benefit from with regards to the transportation.
Yeah, and I, I would definitely echo your, your sentiments, both Jamie and Tom. And I would add on my own that for, for the viewers at home, for the public, for the taxpayers, for the Select Board who's listening. The collaborative currently provides to us a, a multiple, multitude of different things. And, and what we're really talking about here is that the collaborative provides transportation for us, which, which is what, and they provide educational services to vocational educational services. The vocational educational services I get, it's just like, you know, our, our teachers and the, the, the funds around that are all talked about. Trying to preserve as much as you can of the educational environment that you can. But in my heart of heart, I find it so hard to just vote to furlough 18 people while at the same time the collaborative has bus drivers who aren't driving buses. They're having buses that are empty that may or may not be getting an insurance discount for sitting in a, a lot for right now. And they're saving so far six weeks worth of gas and it will be another probably four to six weeks of gas, which has to be, when you're talking about the number of buses that they put out there, a significant amount of money on the, the buses. I don't think any of us are asking that, that we not pay for the cost that they are expending during this time. But I think we are looking for, you know, if we are going to have to make tough cuts or if we're going to have to make tough decisions on our side, the collaborative has to as well. And then, and, and if, if the rest of the districts don't feel that way or don't see it, then they are doing a disservice to not only the, the collaborative, they're doing a disservice to their taxpayers to not be asking those hard questions. Sorry, that's my rant. Bronwyn?
I just wanted to add that at the meeting last week, I did ask about the gas savings. And they were estimating it to be a couple hundred thousand dollars. I think we could probably pinpoint that a little bit closer and then each district would get how much, every percent of, of the buses they use. And they were also checking on the insurance discount. They were thinking about 10% based on their initial conversations. But they were hoping to get a clearer number this week. So there's definitely savings in both those areas.
So the other item that finance sub discussed that is on your agenda for consideration tonight is actually would be authorization or setting of the bus register, the bus fee for next school year. I know it's kind of difficult to figure, setting a rate when we have no idea what transportation may look like. But I'm concerned that if we don't at least start the process of getting registrations in hand, being able to figure out the routes, at least with the knowledge that we have in terms of how long it'll take us to plan to set up the route, once we receive all the registrations. I'm, I'm concerned if we wait to find out what parameters we are reopening under, we could have our backs up against the wall trying to figure out how to, how to utilize buses. So what I recommended was at least proceed with setting a rate, allowing individuals to register and making it clear that priority will be given to the individuals that we are legally required to transport. So students who are in gate, in grades kindergarten through sixth grade who reside more than two miles from their school, the law requires that the districts provide transportation. So we would, we would have to make sure we could accommodate those students first. And I know a finance sub that was some concern about people registering, thinking that they're planning on it for it to be provided next year, but then to potentially find out that it's not something we can accommodate in terms of being a, an individual that is paying for the service. And they recommended that we, we are clear to individuals that we are not legally required to transport that preference is going to be given to those we have to transport first. And then it's going to be on a, a first come, a first registered basis, which is usually the process we use anyways. But if we have to run multiple, multiple runs during the day because of staggered times or, you know, students attending half days or, I mean, I have no idea, we could probably come up with five or six different scenarios of what it could look like. But I just want to get the process going so that we can plan for individuals that we know we have to transport and have that information available when we have to start setting routes based on whatever guidance we receive in terms of what reopening may look like. So finance sub did recommend the school committee set the rate at 235, $235, which is the rate that we charged this year. It's been the rate for a few years now. And it would also have a family cap of two riders. So a total of $470 would be the most that a household would pay for transportation services. So the third and fourth student in a house would be free.
Okay, is there any, is there a motion on that?
Yes.
I know there is. Jamie, you want to say something?
Yeah, just, just add, add one thing to it. Tom did an incredible job going through it all. But one other thing that we did talk about yesterday, he alluded to it, but I want to make sure everybody completely follows the practicality of it. You know, we get to a point, say we have four buses as a, as a district that we are required by law to handle. And we, we get to that point where we have an additional couple, a hundred kids above and beyond that. At that point in time, we as a committee either say, no, we're not doing additional buses if the new law, whatever restrictions we're living under at that point, require us to do. So whether we would go spend, spend more money for those kids within the district that had registered or they go back and say, nope, we told you in the front end that this wasn't a done deal, that we were still working through all the requirements and at that point tell them they wouldn't have their bus. This could happen, Tom, right, pretty, pretty late in the year. I mean, this could really disrupt families' lives, but it is something that is out there. I want to make sure, we, we talked pretty, pretty detailed about it yesterday. So I want to make sure at least practicality of this is we could be at a very late notice telling people they do not have a bus rag to school.
Tom, just from a procedural standpoint, but that's no different than any other year, right? I mean, it's always first come, first served and you know that.
Yes, yes. I think, I think what we talked about yesterday was that whatever the parameters are for next school year might limit capacity. So if, if what a, what a normal 52-ruiter bus is now cut down to 25, well, we might not have that capacity to add onto that bus the number of pairs that we normally could accommodate. So we've been very fortunate to accommodate those that have, or just about everybody that registered that needed it. We do tell people that it is a first come, first served. And there have been some people who have been put on a waiting list because we don't have capacity. It's very possible that number could be much higher next year, depending upon what, what we, the parameters we have to utilize the bus is under.
Okay.
There was more, yep, there was just more concerns around when are we going to get that direction and how late will it be? I mean, we all hope that it's going to be next weekend. We'll have some clarification because then that would be a lot easier to communicate with everybody. But our worry is this could drag on a little bit, not really knowing and really disrupt some families who thought they might have a, a way to school.
No, that's perfect. Thanks, Jamie. That, that explains that something did change in those parameters or will change in those parameters.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
I just wrote one.
Yeah, that's fine.
I moved that the school committee approves the FY21 bus registration fees at 235 for individual student and 470 for a family max.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Motion is second. Further discussion. I think I, the further discussion is that we're just making very clear that when people are, then we send out the registration forms, people understand, or when they fill them out, people understand that this is a first come, first served as a space available, could be the last minute, make sure you have a backup plan. Because busing is not going to be guaranteed. I mean, thankfully, we live in a town where for most of the middle schools and the high schoolers, walking would always be a, a, a thing, you know, for people that aren't mandated for, for busing, but, but please have a backup. Any further discussion? See you in a call for a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Armin, yes. Tom, anything else from finance sub?
Nope, that was it for tonight. Thank you.
No, thank you, Tom. Okay, we're going to move on to ongoing business. We did the budget. Yep, go ahead, Ryan.
Can I, can I speak about eval sub? Because we did have a meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead.
So we, we met to discuss with Marty about the, the plan for the self evaluation and for, I mean, a self assessment and for us to get our evaluations done. So I just want to share with everybody the dates that we plan. So if Marty's going to present his self assessment on the 19th, if you all can plan to have your personal evals done by the 26th, the eval sub will meet that week and we'll be able to produce our presentation to the full committee for the vote on June 2nd. That way we get it done before the election. Gives everybody about a week, which includes Memorial Day, but you know, you're not doing anything. So you have time to get those evaluations done and into us so that we can write up our summary. It's the same plan as we did last year. That makes sense.
I'm going to write all those dates in the chat for you guys so you can just copy and paste them somewhere so you have them.
Yeah. And Diane, you can send those out as well, right? Thank you. Thanks, Suzie. All right. Anything else then there?
That was it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, going on then, we're going to ongoing business. We did the pandemic FY20, FY21, the continuity of learning, remote learning update. Is that Sue or Marty? Marty, oh, there you go.
With that. Sue, filling any gaps here, I want to circle back with the committee and I will circle back with the whole community on some of the results of a staff and parent survey that we did. We've sort of identified some growth areas for us in the, in the remaining weeks. One of them kind of an overarching goal just relates to accessibility and engagement and, you know, ensuring that that the instructional component associated with remote learning ensures that kids have opportunities to access the instruction in ways that are as equitable as possible. Armin, our, our student rep mentioned earlier that he's seen an increase in, I think, teacher use of synchronous video-based learning tools. And so that good astute observation there, Armin, because the data backs up what you're saying. We have seen that. We were able to track in the aggregate, the amount of time that, the amount of Zoom meetings that, that teachers are using. And those are critical for instruction and student engagement. And I appreciate that so many teachers have been kind of willing to explore those tools. And so that we're seeing more and more of it. And then the last thing is sort of attention to the requisite, prerequisite standards that Desi has identified. So we'll, we'll continue to pay attention to those. The, the message from the department has been sort of to make sure that kids are ready for the next school year. And we understand that it can't be perfect, that remote learning in no way replaces regular classroom instruction, but we'll be attentive to those standards. Couple of quick things. Classroom cleanout and is, is underway. Our elementary teacher is beginning tomorrow in socially distanced ways and safe ways. We'll head back into the building in very small numbers with the blessing of the fire chief to gather up their materials, gather up additional instructional materials, and then gather up student materials. And we got to figure out a way to get what is remaining in student cubbies and lockers and things back to their students. So we're starting with the elementary level and we'll, we'll work our way through the other grade levels.
Hey Marty, along those lines, do we have any, and Kathy Rizzotto, you might be able to answer this as well. Do we have any teachers that are retiring significant anniversaries during this time? Are there plans to do something to like celebrate that at a later time or just to recognize their service to the district?
You want to take it Kathy? So I, I've seen, anecdotally, I've seen a lot of plans sort of underway to sort of somehow celebrate the end of some really great careers. We've got a lot of really excellent veteran teachers who probably never imagined that their careers would end this way. And, and you make a great point, Armin, and we might want to think of a way to kind of recognize them as a district because the typical send offs won't happen. So that's, that's a sad thing for people that have, have spent decades in many cases with us. So.
Okay. Cause I know that a lot has been done with teachers and administration to acknowledge the accomplishment and achievements of students who may not be, that I just wanted to make sure that the, the teachers and staff all know that we're thinking of them as, you know, as, you know, maybe they aren't being able to be recognized like they should. So that's.
Well said, well said. And then along those lines, Tom Landers and the high school administration have been working closely with me and the, and Chief Dearborn and Beverly Herschore and the health agent to figure out a way to safely honor the class of 2020. So there's a, some, we had a Zoom call today where we were vetting some of the plans that the high school is considering right now. It's centering on a, a sort of pre-recorded graduation ceremony that the students would watch together in some safe approved ways. So stay tuned for that. We'll, we'll keep the committee apprised. We'll have to talk to the committee about the conferral of diplomas, which is a, my policy, a function of the school committee and the school committee chair. So I'll have to bring a recommendation to you at a future meeting to figure out how we're going to either adhere to that policy or approach things differently. So that's about it. I appreciate the committee supporting the purchase of Chromebooks. I'll get that word out to families as soon as possible. But we think that it will put us in a position, good position next year, whether it's a traditional year or some type of unfamiliar remote learning experience for kids. So, so that's great. So that's all I got. And if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah. And then Marty or Sue, just on, I go while we're staying on here, recovery and return to school as well. Do you have anything to add there or?
Yes, we, so.
Or do you want to take these separately?
No, I, I think it's, you know, I, not from lack of discussion and reading and planning. But, you know, really frankly, no concrete plan. We're, we're trying to, we're awaiting maybe the state's plan for recovery that may or may not come out after May 14th. But I think as Sue has encouraged us to think about kind of multiple pathways, you know, sort of a traditional opening and then a remote opening or some type of staggered physically distance scheduled opening. So I think there's many, many different scenarios. I'm starting to see, you know, we've read about other countries' experiences. We've read some, some of the emerging CDC guidance on this and we'll, we'll keep our, we'll keep our planning hats on, but I can't say to you that we have a, a plan for reopening next year. Many, many ideas, but no plans. Just that.
Just back to, can I go?
Go Sue.
Just back to continuity of learning. The, another prompt to that is really making sure that we try to engage our disengaged learner to the utmost extent. So our schools, principals, counselors are doing an awesome job at reaching out to families of students who are disengaged or are partially engaged. And it's a really small handful, but they're really following, you know, parameters and, and kids are really far more engaged than at many other places. So.
Yeah, I, again, on that phone call on Friday, I think Marty clarified it today. You know, a lot of the parents were asking about missing their one-on-one time with children and being that, you know, outside of that physical connection, how could they get a deeper like Zoom connection and, and all that? And I gotta say, you know, I, I said it the last week that, you know, Long Meadow continues to be at the forefront of, of this remote learning and I see what's happening with, you know, some of my nieces and my nephews and other districts and the engagement by our educators is just, it's, I, I've said it every week. I'm going to say it again, just to be applauded. They're doing an excellent, excellent job of you know, keeping the, the kids engaged. And so and I know if we have to take other plans next year or next fall or whatever happens, I know we have the, the staff and the administration to work together to, 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 to keep up the, those high standards up. So thank you.
Thank you. If the committee has any thoughts on what, you know, kind of recovery and reopening could potentially look like or any direction or guidance, we're, we're certainly open to that.
Oh, Bronwyn?
I asked that a question regarding that Marty. Has the state indicated when they're going to be able to give you any guidance? I know it's still early, but.
They haven't, they haven't. I, I think the Desi guidance, the only thing they've said is that the Desi guidance will follow the governor's guidance. So that's about all I could say concretely.
Thanks.
The other thing I'd add is that I got, Brian, I'll keep right there. I got to talk to Chief Dearborn. It was either last Thursday or, and he took a good 15 minutes just to talk to me about what's going on in the town, all the precautions that they're taking. So I think the, the committee, the COVID-19 Town Task Force has been doing a, a great job as well. To be applauded, I would remind people at home that, you know, social distancing isn't playing lacrosse with 20 kids over at Turner Field, or it's not, you know, playing baseball at Turner Field with all of your friends. It's not, you know, it's not those things. You know, every little thing helps. I understand that those aren't populations that are spreading COVID, but everything, everything helps. And parents to the point that you can control your, your children and not have them at the park playing with other children out in the, the park in large crowds, then I would encourage you to, to do that and take control of that situation, please, because it'll just help us all. It's not, it's not that population we're talking about, but we have a lot of elderly, older people in town and, and want to try to keep everybody safe. So to the best we can do that, let's do that. Sorry, Ryan?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the, the talk about the, the teachers and what they're doing during this weird teaching time. I just want to say that I appreciate the ones that have included me on emails to my children and the one amazing best teacher ever who called me to say, tell your son to get the frigging work done. Very much. As, as much as I would like to say that I am all over them all the time, I'm not. As parents, we have a lot going on. So it is very much appreciated when the teachers call or email to help you remind them what needs to be finished.
Any other updates or questions or comments? All right, Tom, we have the comp and bin authorization?
We do. So the period ending would be May 8th, 2020. But I just think we would maybe want to add some language in regards to the individuals, the, the employees that are furloughed that they would receive compensation through, through May 6th, today's date.
Okay. Somebody want to take a chance, a pass at that motion?
Kevin's usually pretty good in them.
All right. I moved that the school committee authorized that for the pay period ending Friday, May 8th, 2020, the district pay all current employees not to leave that portion of their base pay. And the portion of any annual stipend to which they are entitled, consistent with the effective collective bargaining agreement or individual contract of employment, or in the case of unrepresented at will employees pay them the same amount as they were paid the period ending April 10th, 2020, with the exception of the employees that were voted on to be furloughed and that they be paid through the pay period through today, May 6th.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, I'm going to call for a roll call. Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Armin, yes. We don't have any new business. So at this point, I would call motion to adjourn in order.
So moved.
Move second. Motion second. Any further discussion? See, and a call for a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Armin, yes. Thank you for joining us tonight. We will be again on May 19th. Diane?
Yeah, that's where we.
Okay, she can't come off of you. Yes, it's May 19th. Thank you. Have a great night.
Everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.